Good evening, everybody. Welcome. My name is Rosa DeFlorio and it's an honor and a privilege to do this for the B Team tonight. As a mother of five boys, I know the sacrifices that the parents and the coaches do on a daily basis. And it's great. And it takes team and effort. Congratulations. And congratulations also to the parents and the coaches. I'm gonna... I'm gonna invite Dennis Wilcox here. He's the head coach. And he will give everybody their recognition because with all the hard work that he has done to bring this team here, he deserves to be recognized also. Thank you.
Good evening. I had to write this down because I forget what happened. It was a long season. We started the season one and three in last place. And we lost a couple of tough games. And then we finished four and four, got the last seed into the playoffs. And then we just turned it up a notch and we got better as the year went on. That's what Popolono football is all about, making kids better in the fundamentals. And our first playoff game was against East Lynn. We beat them 38 to 8. Our second playoff game, we were avenging a regular season loss. We lost 20 to 7 in the regular season to Dorchester. We beat them in the playoffs 33 to 6. And the third game was for the Eastern Mass championship. We lost to them in the regular season 13 to 12. And we won the Eastern Mass championship beating them 14 to 6. And the final game for the States, which Brian and the organization, we were the host... Eastern Mass was the host team this year, host organization this year. We got to play for the state championship at Everett Stadium. We played the Boston Raiders and we blanked them 30 to nothing. And it was just a great team effort. Then we went on to the New England championship. We don't want to talk about what happened that day, but we fell a little short to Edgewood, Rhode Island. But I just want to say thank you to Brian Diamond, who's in the back there, who through the years, we didn't always see eye to eye. We do now, thank God. But he's always given me everything I ever needed to, you know, make the team better. And, you know, my assistants, John Rush, Carol Manuel, Chris Carabino, who couldn't be here, Victor Ruiz, who's not here either, Joey White, who's not here, and Danielle. And thank you to my wife Kelly for dealing with me because I'm not very easy to deal with during football season. And the number one thank you goes to Lisa Marucci for standing on the other sideline and making sure all the kids got their plays. The opposite sideline. And thank you to Councilwoman DeFlorio for helping us out to get us up here and recognize that these kids won a state championship. Thank you.
Before I have the mayor come up to say a few words, I'm gonna introduce my colleagues, Council President John Healan, Councilor Fred Capone, Councilor Anthony DiPiero, Councilor Mike Mangan, Councilor Richie Delasola, and Councilor Leo McKinnon, I'm sorry, and Councilor Mike McLaughlin. This is what we do every day. We work on a team to bring Everett forward. Thank you. Thank you very much for making us proud. Mayor Colleen Maria.
Well, Dennis, we want to thank you for your tremendous leadership on the field. I was unable to see some of the games this year. What happened was, once you won that title game, I said to myself, I go to the next game and they lose. I'm the bad luck guy, you know? So I had Anthony down there giving me play-by-play. And I know Councilman Mangan went down and Councilman Delasola telling me what was going on. So I'm very proud of you boys for your efforts and what you did as a team, especially coming back from, you know, having a, you know, a tough beginning and then beating these teams when it really mattered. That just shows that you really, all engines were firing and that you were really starting to come together as a team and listening to your coaches and understanding the plays. Because life isn't easy. You don't get, sometimes it doesn't really come naturally. You have to work and work and work. And you proved that working hard and going to practice every day and putting the time in and probably going home and, you know, rehearsing the plays in your head and making sure that you knew your job and, you know, what block you had to make. You know, it's not all the running backs and the quarterbacks also. It's also the guys up front that make those blocks and open up those holes. And the guys on defense that contain the offense. So, I mean, there's so many, so many people. It's a team, it's a team sport. And you should be all very proud of yourselves to be state champions, to represent the city here. We're all very proud of you. I know your parents are proud of you and your coaches are very proud of you. And I'm just, again, happy to be here to offer some citations from the city of Everett. I want to thank Council DeFlorio for recognizing the B Team and making sure that they had their due here at City Hall. I apologize that I didn't bring you up, but I'm glad Rosa did and I'm glad Rosa invited me to say a few words. And I do have a citation for the boys. You know, Dennis, if you would join me up here, I will read yours first and then we can bring you boys up together. Is that all right? So Coach Dennis Wilcox, where is he? Joey White here, John Rush, Victor. Coach John Bowles not here?
Oh, yeah, John Bowles.
He still here? You still allow him on the roster?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah? There are a lot of coaches on this team, aren't there?
Yeah.
So Dennis, I've seen you in action. I've seen you on your Facebook pages. I've seen you coach your other son's team when you went down to Florida and won it all the year before, right? The national champions. I went to a few of those games, some of those cold, that cold game. And I don't know where we were, somewhere it was a fire ride in Worcester. Was that Worcester? I see the, you, the boys listen to you. You know, you've had some tough days as a young man growing up. And what you've accomplished yourself and what you, what you do for other people in this community that maybe people don't realize, not just kids, but the support that you offer to people in my own family. You're just a true gentleman. Guys like me look at you and we appreciate what you do and we respect you. I know a lot of people love you and I do. And so the citation is from the city and it's just something that, be here and on to all, is on the mayor, Mayor Colleen Maria. Offer my most serious congratulations to Dennis, head coach Dennis Wilcox and the recognition of your dedication, your hard work, resulting in your being the 2015 Eastern Mass and state champions. Congratulations, Dennis.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right. You want to bring the other coaches up that are here?
Yeah.
Joey White's not here, you said?
No.
Coach John Rush, I see John.
Yeah.
John?
Is there one more for Danielle? I mean Carol?
Yeah? Now, John, not only does he coach football, but he coaches baseball. I see him at all the fields with all the kids. I don't even think you have kids in this system. I think you maybe have grandchildren now in the system. Or am I even wrong?
No, no family member.
No family member. And how many years have you been coaching throughout the city of Everett?
Seven years now.
Seven years now. So John, just a little citation from the city of Everett. Just want to congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you do for our city. You're welcome. Danielle? Coach stay here with us. This citation is for Coach Danielle Nadu. Danielle? And I know Danielle's been part of the organization for many years. I think she was there when my son played on the E Team. So Danielle, and I think you started off by doing whatever it was, the play. You still doing that same thing? Well, you do a great job doing that. So congratulations. Thank you for everything you do for the city. Coach Carolyn Manuel. Carolyn, same goes to you. I know you not only do this with the little kids, you do it at the high school. I see your passion on the football field. And I want to thank you for all you do for the kids of Everett. Chris is not here?
He's not here.
All right.
I'll take the one to one. Johnny's not here either.
Johnny's not here? Two favorite guys, Chris and Johnny on here?
Yeah, exactly.
They must not know I was giving citations out. My buddy Joey White. All right. These are the kids? Oh, the team mom. See, where is she? Team mom Kelly Wilcox. We have two team moms. Kelly? Kelly is looking at me like she wasn't a team mom, but I, we know that, we know. We'll get her up here, but we're not going to give it to Mike either. But Kelly, raising two fine boys in the city. And I know you're the brains behind the operation because I know my, I know my, I know my wife is. So on behalf of the entire city of Everett, thank you for everything you do, Kelly. You're welcome. I hope she doesn't smoke cigarettes on the football field. No, right?
No, she goes around the corner.
She goes around the corner and stuff. She's a wonderful friend, grew up with her in high school and just a great all-around person. Team mom Lisa Marucci. Oh, yeah, she's great. Stop with the kids? All right, yes. This is Coach Victor Ruiz. Is Victor here?
No.
No, Victor's not here either.
Probably asleep.
All right, probably asleep. All right. So I'm going to read one of these citations. And boys, it's basically the same thing. It says, "The mayor offered my most serious congratulations to the first man, boy, is CJ Sarat." CJ here? CJ, come on up. Are you here?
Yeah.
Come on up, CJ. We'll do this quick. Give me the next one. Tavon Bradley. Boys, stay up here. Right up, boys. Want to take a picture with all the members of the city council? You can just come right here. Raisab Barty. That's a tough one. Brandon Pinata. All right.
By the way.
All right, oh, by the way. Here's Brandon Pinata.
There he is.
There you go. David Meninger. Robert Lumentain. K O Rodriguez. Daviel Cora. Daviel's not here. Jeff Delgado. Not here. Sturvens Antoin... Antoine Sturvens. Growing up, it was all Italian-Irish kids. It was so easy for me. Ralph Carboni. Ali Fountain. Cam Scott. Bernard Platel. No? No Bernard? Zach Maitri. Maitri. Come this way, come this way. Up, up, up. Kamari Elerbi. Elerbi, Elerbi. Elerbi, Elerbi. That's an easy one, yes. Brandon Gibbs. But, yeah, yeah? David Chifuentes. Mikey Stanton. Stavon Delgado. Stavon not here? Not here. Josh Baldwin. Cyril Carboni. Max Schellingford. Max not here. Shay Wilcox. Good kid, you son, yeah? Yeah. Takes after his mother. Well, actually, he does take after you. The other one takes after the mother. Lenz Altonore. That's kind of hair I want, Lenz. Just like that. Tyrese Bepiste. Did I miss anybody? Victor? Where's Victor's citation? Is that Victor? You got Victor's over there? Victor, it only takes two seconds. So we'll make you a nice special one down in the office and I'll sign it for you. Victor Fernandez. All right. Let me see that for one second. Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, the 2015 Eastern Massachusetts and state champions. Now, if I can get the members of the city council to join me and taking a picture with these fine young men. Fine young men, yeah. Remember these nice days, being young. How are we gonna do it? We, who wants to line us up? Andrew, you wanna, you wanna do some cheers in front or something or? Why don't we put this first row in cheers? Put this first row in cheers? Yeah? Can we do that? No? See, this is why we need a new city hall, so we can take better pictures. We have a staircase somewhere.
Like in the great hall at the state office.
Yeah, exactly, in the great hall. Everyone front down on one knee or something, maybe? Three-point stance? The guy's taking a photo, so line us up. We good here or how are we looking? Hey, we got the wrong guy in front of you here. Andrew, maybe if you got, if you guys got on top of the desk and took it coming down a little? Yeah, get on top of the desk. Yeah. And then come, come angle, coming down. No insurance for you.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
Mike. Mike, get them out of the railing. They're going, they're going.
How you doing? What's going on there?
Well, this guy couldn't shake his hands.
Oh, nice to meet you, Kurt Capone.
Good guy.
Clerk of Colorado, please.
Counsel Capone.
Here.
Counsel Delasola.
Here.
Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel DePiero.
Here.
Counsel Mangan.
Here.
Counsel Matusky.
Here.
Counsel McKinnon.
Here.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counsel Palatano. Counsel Semenelli. Counsel Hanlon.
Here.
Ten members present, Mr. President.
Would the audience please rise and join the council in the pledge legion to the flag?
I pledge a legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'm going to ask a moment of silence for everybody to stand, but before we do that, I just want to introduce Shane Semenelli, who's sitting at the end there, who will be Steve's voice for a few weeks. And also that Ella O'Donnell, who is the daughter of Dennis O'Donnell, our police officer, she's hospitalized and very ill. And Madeline Begonzi, who passed away on Saturday, Sunday, and she was a teacher at the Whittier School, so please stand.
Thank you. Is there public participation?
Mr. McGlaughlin, you're not allowed to have a separate my message.
Well, thanks, everyone, for having me here and letting me help out my uncle. My name is Shane Semenelli. I'm gonna be just dictating what he had said to me, as far as how he's going to vote on each issue. And I thank you for having me, thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, yeah, okay. Rosa, do you have any public participation?
I have a motion to, are we gonna read it?
Yep, open, open, public.
Open public participation.
Motion made in second, open public participation, all in favor, signal five, saying aye, all opposed, saying nay, the ayes have it. Rosa, is anyone?
I have Laura Chivaco.
Is Laura in the audience?
I hope I pronounced that right.
Yes. Would you please come forward?
What am I gonna say? My name's Laura Chivaco. I live at 520 Ferry. Can you hear me? Laura Chivaco, from 520 Ferry Street, in Everett, of course. I'm here to complain about the excessive noise due to construction. From 7:00 PM to 7:00 in the morning. Or, as it was today, they started at 1:00 with a different company and five trucks vibrating the whole house and neighborhood. So then it'll start again at 7:00 and it'll just go around the clock. I don't know how you think blue collar workers are gonna get any sleep to go to work the next day, or be able to function without being stressed. I don't think that was taken into any kind of consideration. The way Everett's set up, there's plenty of blocks that you can reroute traffic down a couple blocks and up around, it's very accessible. I don't see why you had to do this at night. I think it's terrible, it's a disgrace. That's what I came to say.
Thank you very much, thank you. Counsel DeFlorio? Anyone else?
I remember- Closed public participation.
Motion made in second, closed public participation before that. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to say anything to the council on any subject matter whatsoever?
Yes. Hi. Hi, my name is Donna Sichetta Davidson, I live on Springville Avenue. And we've noticed recently, especially since 12:09, December 9th, there have been seven incidents of, that I know of, of people coming into our yards and our driveways and into our cars. And I, I did purchase some cameras, and I do have a lot of them on film, and the police have been aware of some of these because personally, I was affected. My daughter's laptop was stolen. And we've noticed it's become epidemic. I really think it goes on every night, it's just, I only look when somebody calls me to say, Donna, check your cameras because everything was taken out of my car last night. And sometimes I can catch it on film. And especially since, usually they do try every car in the neighborhood. So they come in your driveway, and, you know, recently, the last incident was 1:24, oh, actually, last night, Saturday night, Jefferson Ave. On the 19th, people from Madison Ave called me, and there were two men out, they took a little girl's backpack and then were running through all our yards, emptied everything out in her backyard, and continued to ransack different cars around the neighborhood. Parkview Ave, I've gotten private Facebook messages from people I don't even know, but they've seen some of my pictures that I've put up. I'm getting more than a few private messages from neighbors in the area, Jefferson, Madison, Springville, Parkview, Rich Deal. Everybody in this neighborhood seems to be affected now, and it's epidemic. I know it probably revolves around the drug epidemic, too, of course, which somewhere along the line, higher up, maybe we could educate people about this. Because, I mean, it is a disease, I understand that, but it's affecting us hardworking people. And it's scary because I see them carrying some kind of metal object, and it has a point on it, I think it's something to smash your windshields or your glass or whatever. I thought it was a gun at first, but I'm sure maybe it's, it could be that, too. But, you know, one of my own neighbors I caught on film stealing from my car. So, we're very concerned because it's not happening just once in a blue moon now, it's probably every night. I've got seven incidents right here, just starting on December 9th, up until the 24th of this, this weekend. And I'm hoping that we can get more police patrols. You know, not only that, but we're finding hypothermic needles all over the pla- I mean, it's just getting to the point where it's affecting all of us, even us who don't use. You know, we sympathize with them, but they're stealing from us, and it's dangerous. It's getting very dangerous. There was just a robbery on Broadway today, right in broad daylight. People trying to pry open your back cell, basement doors if you don't answer the front door. It's becoming really bad, and I can tell you, scanning my cameras, which takes a lot of time, it's very time consuming, I've never seen one police car. From, from midnight to 7:00 in the morning, not one patrolling police car. So I am hoping that we can step up the police patrol at night, and maybe, you know, they should be not just driving by, but going slow, looking in driveways, because that's where they are. They're in our driveways and in our backyards. And that's my concern.
Thank you. Not allowed to debate with the person-
I know this.
But I want to let you know that item 28 on our calendar has something to do with that matter, so maybe the sponsors might move to have that brought up earlier so that you'd be able to sit, so don't leave right away.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak before the council? Hearing none, on the motion to close the public participation, all in favor? All opposed, so move.
I make a motion suspend the rules, take item 28.
Second.
Oh, what a surprise. Second? Motion made in second, take item 28 out of order. On the motion, I would like to ask Counsel DePiero to speak first.
I'm number 28, resolution sponsored by counselors, Anthony DePiero, Richard Delasola, Mike McGlaughlin, Everett Community Television. Consider running a message board alerting residents of a number of recent car break-ins, specifically in the Springville area, so residents can be aware and take precaution.
Counsel?
Thank you for coming up and speaking with us, Donna, I've been in touch with Donna over the past week or so about the incidents going on. And it is concerning, I asked this piece to be put on, so the residents in the area know what's going on, so they can be alerted and take precaution. It's simple things, you know, don't leave valuables in your car, lock them up, but they can still break the windows, we all know that. So I just want the neighbors in her area to be aware, and I have been in talks with the police chief, they are gonna be working on stepping up patrols in the area, and they have been looking at the footage, and they were given an address with some, with some problem individuals, and they're pretty sure they know who they are, and, you know, they're responsible for this, so hopefully some action gets taken in the near future.
Counsel Delasola?
I have the same concerns as my colleagues here. This is something that, if we could have the patrol, if we had stepped up in the area, I'm kinda shocked that on, on the videos, there's no signs of police at all going by there, all the times that this has been happening. If we get, even undercover cars, you drive up and down the street, if they see the crews are coming down, you know, they're gonna run and hide. If an undercover car comes down the street, even, I know it's one at a time, but a foot patrol, it seems to be happening, so people, I don't, I don't know, usually 1:00 in the morning to about 4:00 in the morning, is when this is happening. So, we all have the same concerns, and hopefully, and I'm sure our police chief will step up patrol in that area. Thank you.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also, not to repeat my colleagues, but I also am very concerned about this issue. I'm concerned because it is off of a main road, Elm Street, so if we're not paying attention really to that neighborhood, what else is going on that we don't know about in this community as far as these types of events happen overnight? It's, it's something that needs to come to a head, it's not something that, I agree with Counsel DePiero to put some notice on ECTV to be able to notify residents, but there's some questions that I've come up, that I've thought of, that I'd like to address with the, our chief of police. So I think this is a bigger issue than just referring this to ECTV and asking them to be able to put this forward for PSA, I think that we need to have Chief of Police or somebody before us to talk about this issue. I think we need to, like Counsel Delasola said, do some foot patrols in the neighborhood, have some of our police officers walk that beat. It's right down the street from the police station, which is another issue. If it's on the same street that our police station's on and it's happening, it's really a concern to me. So I'd like to ask that we do send this to ECTV, but to also refer this to public safety, public service and government operations, so that we can invite up Chief of Police or somebody from the police department to talk about beats. Talk about how often they do go up and down the streets, how often are they in the neighborhood? Can they do something more to be able to be more visible in the neighborhood for residents? I live on the other side of the city, but I'm as concerned about that as if it was in my own neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Semenelli?
So Counsel Semenelli would also like to talk about reverse 911, and how it would be quicker and more direct. Reverse 911 is sometimes used for the wrong reasons, and it should be used for emergencies and public safety issues. And he would, not for any sort of entertainment or political uses. He would like to amend the motion by adding reverse 911. A motion would be amended by adding reverse 911.
Second motion.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to second sending this to the Public Safety Committee. As you may recall, I was talking about some, not an actual break-in in the area, but we're talking about increased police visibility across the city. Just our last meeting, I put a piece on, and we've collectively referred it over to public safety, which talked about increasing foot patrol, possibly bike patrol, more visibility across- across the entire city. Because you look around and we keep making the news for the wrong reasons. So we're doing the best we can, but we need to step up visibility, we need to have our residents feel safe, and we need to be able to provide that for our residents. So I would second sending this to Public Safety. It'll be with the other piece, the chief will already be here and we can ask him all the questions.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with Counsel Capone that we do need the whole city, because if you move them from one street, they go to another. So this has to be something that has to be citywide, it's just not one area. So I, I would agree to that. Thank you.
Counsel McKennan?
Hello, Counsel.
Oh, I thought you were raising your hand. Anyone else? Counsel DePiero?
If we are going to invite the chief up to come before our committee, I would like to request that the crime analyst also be present.
Who?
The crime analyst.
All right. I understand you want to refer this to the community, Everett Community Television. I need someone to talk to them, say exactly what they want to appear. Would that be you? That's your assignment. And next, I need, I know that, Michael, you asked for the Police Department to be here. I need to know what exact questions you want to ask them. This is according to our rules now and I want to try to enforce those rules, okay?
Sure, as I did on some pieces that I referred two weeks ago, I will do the same tonight and submit some questions in a generalized subject, because I don't think that we can really get down to, to the nitty gritty of this in writing. I think this is going to be a developing conversation, but I will put an outline forward that describes some of my questions.
We need questions to ask. We can't just say general questions, so you need to ask something.
Absolutely, and I'll put an outline forward that broadens the issue, but it's not going to be the specific questions, because I think this is a developing conversation that needs to occur, Mr. President.
Any other? Yes, Michael?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I mean, I know you have a second for Counsel Simonelli's thing, but I think that's a great idea also, because there are a lot of people here that have like DirecTV and other things like that, that don't have our cable, so they don't have access to that ECTV. Plus, you know, some people just don't have cable at all or any of that stuff. So I think that's the greatest thing, you can effectively reach people is to reverse 911, so I wholeheartedly support his decision.
And Counsel Simonelli?
A motion to amend.
Okay. To add for reverse 911. Okay, we got that, okay. And also to ask for the 911, to notify people in that. Want to do citywide notification? Citywide? Citywide notification of recent car breaks and so forth. Anything else on those motions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the motion so carries. Just went to the Committee on Government Operations.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and take items number 19 and 20 collectively.
Thank you.
Motion, take items 19 and 20. All in favor, signal if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, clerk will read item number 19.
Item 19 is a resolution sponsored by Counsel DeFlorio and Counsel Michael J. McLaughlin to invite a member of the City Engineering Department to discuss work being done on Linden Street by Public Works. And item 20 is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Michael J. McLaughlin. Counsel John Leo McKenney, representative of National Grid, come to speak regarding work down on Ferry Street.
We'll take item number 19 first, Counsel DeFlorio.
If we could have the city engineer and Jerry Navarro, Department of Public Works.
Please identify yourself, gentlemen.
Jerry Navarro, DPW Director.
Bill O'Rourke, Director of Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the sidewalks on Linden Street, I believe I've seen them already filled in at this time?
It's currently filled in, correct.
They're currently filled in. Now, what, so they seem pretty solid to me, not that I'm an expert, but they seem pretty solid.
They're safe.
They are safe. So you can, you're able to, now that we had the snowstorm, you're able to plow and keep up with them?
Yes.
Until the spring? Okay. And I know we had been working on this issue for quite a while and unfortunately, things didn't go as planned, that's why we got a late start.
Correct.
To begin with, because we had a problem of the poles and electric poles and so on. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for the work. Thank you.
Questions on Linden Street, Michael?
Thanks, Mr.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, gentlemen. I have submitted questions for tonight's meeting. I don't know how you want to proceed with going forward with these list of questions that I've asked, Mr. President, but they have received the questions and I don't know if you want to go one by one on these questions or how you would like to begin this, this dialogue.
Well, you question them, I'll stop if we have to stop, okay?
Okay, sure, no problem at all. So as both of you guys have received the questions, I see in front of Ms. Navarro, can either the city engineer or DPW director explain the actual scope of work? Explain what we're doing there on Linden Street for the residents at home?
We were planning to widen the street out due to, I left you all a packet there regarding all the motor vehicle accidents that occurred in the last two years in that block range. As we all know, it's, it's a very narrow path for two-way travel, so my intentions were to pull back the utility poles, to widen out the street, which we've gained about eight feet in width. Obviously, it didn't pan out the way I wanted it to do, some things got lagged behind. National Grid did a great job. There were some issues with getting Comcast and Verizon out there to transfer the lines from the old line to the new line. Comcast came out there, there was a little bit of a scheduling issue with Verizon, which then we ran into the cold weather.
With respect to Mr. Navarro, my question is, was this talked about in early beginning of the summer? There was some dialogue about this project?
There was dialogue, correct.
So it took from beginning of the summer until almost the first week of December to be able to get the utilities moved off of the poles?
Yes.
That's, that's not good. The talk for them to not respond to you guys' request in a more timely fashion and more timely data.
They had a pretty busy summer and fall. There's some microbursts, I don't know if you heard about them during the summertime that they had a tend to, there was more precedent to take care of first before they got to us. We had to send, get approval by you guys as well. You guys want a summer break in conjunction with that as well, so.
And I apologize, I didn't hear about that, I was actually in, in hospital for most of the summer, so I actually didn't know that those, those types of events had occurred. So I apologize. Who, so we have a delay, June to December, who makes the decision on the first week of December that we're going to go out and rip up?
I'll take full responsibility for that.
200 feet of linear square feet of?
I'll take full responsibility for that.
So you made the decision to go forward with that?
Correct, right.
Do, do you think that that was maybe something that we jumped the gun on because as we seen on Saturday, we, they said we're going to get an inch of snow. We ended up getting a five inches of snow, right? So it can change in the, in the matter in a few hours, as circumstance can change your weather.
I'm well aware of that.
So that, that was a concern to me, that we would go the first week of December and start a project of that magnitude in a neighborhood that is so informed.
If Verizon met their, entered their agreement along with National Grid and Comcast, we wouldn't be talking about this topic at all.
Yep. But could we have waited until the spring to be able to go this way?
I wanted, I wanted to get done before the winter, just in case we had another winter upon us like last year. That was my main concern, safety.
And, and where, we have the ability in-house to be able to do a project of this magnitude, we shouldn't have maybe looked at going outside and outside?
I'm trying to save the city money by doing a lot more work in-house.
But we have the manpower that is equipped to be able to do this much sidewalk?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. What, what's the long-term, again, what's the long-term justification for this area?
Safety.
It's safety. Okay. When, when do you plan that this is going to be completed?
Beginning of the spring, probably late March, early April.
Is there any drainage work going on on Linden Street with this project?
Right now, no.
There's no drainage work, okay. And again, we're, so we have this area barricaded off on Linden Street currently.
Correct, there's about eight spots we took up.
Eight spots again.
Mm-hmm.
So where are those eight residents?
We've accommodated by outlining parking lot spots in the high school lot and we concurred with the Police Department and the Fire Department, make sure we can get our emergency trailers in and out of there, making the swing. And we outlined it detailed, notified the residents with a memo, advised them what they need to do, put proper signage, put two additional crosswalks there, notifying residents they can't use that sidewalk to go to the other side and utilize that crosswalk with signage as well. So I think we covered all our bases.
And we've given enough pocket in the, in the high school?
There's 10.
For visitor pocket? So we're at eight, so everybody has a visitor over on a Saturday night? We don't have 16 spots?
They wouldn't.
We don't have 16 spots anyhow, so I agree with you.
There wouldn't be 16 spots, so.
I understand, absolutely.
Correct.
So those were the questions that I put forward on this project. I'm going to continue to pay attention to make sure that this gets resolved early part of spring. I think it's a great idea. I think that widening Linden Street can only benefit the neighborhood. I just, the timing is concerning to me because we did it the first week of December, but the gist is a great idea and it's going to only benefit, benefit the neighborhood, but some of the residents have called me, that's why I wanted to get the questions out so that they knew what was going on in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Totally understand.
Any further questions? Hearing none, excuse us, the customary thanks. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Make a motion to, oh, what are we going to do with this? Make a motion to refer this item back to sponsor.
Item 19, that is?
Yes.
Item 19, back to sponsor? Okay. All in favor of referring item 19 back to sponsor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Item 20?
Make a motion to, oh, item number 20 is next, but.
You asked for also, you asked for 19 and 20.
Item 20, resolution sponsored by Counsel Michael J. McLaughlin. Counsel John Leo McKenney, representative from National Grid, come to speak regarding work being done on Ferry Street.
Make a motion to invite the gentleman from National Grid, Dan Cameron and Matthew, I can't read the name, I'm sorry.
Carmen.
Juan.
Carmody. At all. President?
Gentlemen, if you would, into the microphone, please introduce yourself.
I'm Dan Cameron with National Grid offices at 170 Medford Street in Malden.
Mr. President, on the motion?
Sir?
And I'm Matthew Carmody, National Grid Project Manager out of the 170 Medford office.
Counsel McLaughlin?
I'd also, I'd also like to invite up the city engineer, Mr. O'Rourke, again, to be able to answer some of these questions with us.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the, on the motion, again, I submitted questions as I was directed to do, so I don't know if we want to again go through the questions that were asked, because I believe you guys have received the questions or I hope you have received the questions, Mr. Cameron. Mr. O'Rourke, you have received the questions, correct?
I have received the questions.
For, for this. So if you want to go through this and again have the same open dialogue, Mr. President, as we did with the previous piece?
Right ahead.
Mr. Cameron or Mr. O'Rourke, can one of you guys give an overall breakdown of what is going on on Ferry Street? We've seen a resident here tonight that's very concerned about the issue, being negatively impacted. She has an elderly mother, she, they had called me about 10 days ago or so and brought this to my attention, what was going on. And numerous amounts of other residents have called me since going forward, include, and also Counsel McKinnon has been given many phone calls regarding this project. I will start off by saying that Mr. Carmody has been tremendous. I've spoken with him several times over the phone. He has been great to work with and I, I thank you, Mr. Cameron, through having him here in the city on this project, but there are some serious concerns that I have regarding this project.
Okay, I'm going to defer this, turn this over to Matt in, in a minute, but in general, as you know, we supply both the gas and the electric distribution to the city of Everett. And with that, we are upgrading the system on Ferry Street from Chelsea Street all the way up to the Malden Line, replacing mains in the street. And it's ahead of the reconstruction that I, we think is planned under a DOT project for Ferry Street. So for more particulars, I'm going to turn this over to Matt Carmody, who is our construction supervisor and is running the job on a daily basis for National Grid.
Thank you for having me. So we started, we, this project was planned and designed in collaboration with the city on their full-depth roadway, roadway reconstruction that they had planned in about a year and a half on Ferry Street. We do this on multiple streets, so that way our older gas mains that are leak-prone pipe and our proactive main replacement service program is ahead of schedule. This way, once the roadway is completed, paved, there'll be no issues on our end from any of our pipelines, we won't be digging it up the next day and everything is done at the end of the work.
So again, can, just the hours of operation, sort of what's going on out there, how many blocks are we getting done or not, you know, because we're doing this in sections, correct, to try to move down Ferry Street? Just an overall of what's going on here in the city with this project, if you could, Mr. Carmody?
So all this was reviewed and approved under pre-construction meetings. We are currently working from 7:00 AM till about 5:00 AM. Hopefully, we plan to be done at 3:00. We work in these hours for public safety due to high traffic volume and also overall to expedite the project. The, the way the project is working, I don't think it'd be as feasible to work this project during the day due to both lanes need to be shut down on Ferry Street. Our concern is residents walking on the sidewalks, managing traffic, along with just the overall congestion. I've broken this project down with three separate crews, one starting at every loca, three locations in a three-phase project, I would like to say. One has started at the Malden Line, one at Broadway, and one right just past Pleasant View Ave. This is to expedite the project, bringing multiple crews in to get the main in as soon as possible. Working at this time, I know is not, you know, the best overall in terms of noise complaints and such forth, but it's for the best for the community, for expedite the work, the work be done safely and for all parties involved.
Would you please restate your hours that you mentioned in first, when you first started?
It's usually 7:00 to 3:00 is where we plan to work, sometimes it's delayed.
7:00 what?
7:00 to 5:00.
7:00 PM to 5:00 AM at the latest. That way, we don't, we don't block any traffic. Correct.
I have a question for Mr. O'Rourke. Mr. O'Rourke, is this gas work leading into any additional projects on Ferry Street?
Yes, the city is currently redesigning Ferry Street from River Beach Parkway to the Malden Line and we're going to be undertaking this work. We're at 25% design plans right now. We hope to have 75 and 100% design plans in the next six months. We'll be bidding the project and we'll be on our way to reconstructing Ferry Street.
Because we got a grant right from the state, is that, is that why this work is all sort of being done? Because we got a grant from the state for $9 million, is the city was awarded?
I'm not up to speed as much as you'd like me to be. I haven't worked on this project as much as city engineer Julius O'Fury. He is more familiar with the project. He's been working with World Tech. World Tech is currently designs Project Boris. Yes, funding is involved from the state DOT, yes.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, absolutely. Again, when are we hoping to have the next phases for it? I guess that's not really, are we going to try to piggyback off of the gas to be able to kind of redo the next phase? So that this doesn't get done, we rehot up and then we go out and do the next phase? Is this going to kind of go one hand after another on this? As you said, we're 25% under construction design right now for the next phase, correct?
Right, right. I came on board with the city in August. I wasn't familiar with all these construction, reconstruction projects and so on, but typically the way construction works, the city, the city shows intent to reconstruct a street and in that notification, we let the utilities know what we intend to do and they take it upon themselves to look at their utilities and determine what is the condition of the utility in the street.
As you said, we're twenty-five percent on the construction design right now for the next phase, correct?
Right, right. Uh, I came on board with the city in August. I wasn't familiar with all these construction, reconstruction projects and so on, but typically the way construction works, the city, the city shows intent to reconstruct a street. And in that notification, we let the utilities know, uh, what we intend to do, and they take it upon themselves to look at their utilities and determine, uh, what is the condition of the utility in the street. I imagine National Grid did that. They have cast iron lines in the street, and it was an opportunity for them to jump in front of us, what utilities typically do. They jump in front, they do the utility work, they upgrade them over to HDP, what they're required to do, so the pipes no longer leak. They get their work done, and then we come in with our work and reconstruct the street so that there will be no, um, unsightly utility patches, uh, showing up in the street.
Again, I'm just gonna run down the questions that I've asked, because you, you've already seen the questions, so I'm just gonna go question by question at this point, Mr. O'Rourke, if you don't mind. Uh, what, what is the rough estimate cost of the next phase of this project? What, so I'm just trying, because again, I spoke with the mayor, he said we had a nine million dollar grant. Are we gonna be able to spend the whole nine million dollar grant on, on this project? I know this street lighting involved, there's a lot of things that are involved in this project, it's a lot just the gas work. So, that's why I'm just trying to see where we are phase by phase to be able to make sure that it's going to...
I believe we'll be spending all that nine million dollars. We're hoping to add additional linear footage of work, uh, in up, uh, past the new high school, Elm Street. Uh, we haven't quite, uh, determined the lengths, but it depends on the construction cost to do that and how much we can do.
And who's designing, who's the designer of the next phase of this project?
World Tech.
World Tech.
Engineering, correct.
Okay. Again, when did the city find out from National Grid that this work was gonna need to be done? About a year and a half ago, and we still decided that this winter was the best time to be able to stop this project? Because we started this project in early December, right, Mr. Cameron?
Yes, but it was a year and a half ago.
It was not a year?
No.
Okay, so when did, when was the first open dialogue that this gas line work was gonna need to be done on Ferry Street?
June twenty-second, we held a meeting for pre-construction. We had a me, a meeting about two to three months prior for engineering staff to at least get the full understanding of the, what the city had planned to perform. As you can understand, obviously, from your side of design, along with ours, we can't just have a meeting to design it overnight, in terms of estimation, budget, so forth. As soon as we did hear of this project, our engineering staff got immediately on this, and as soon as I had all, um, permits, documents ready to go for this job, and the go-ahead from our engineering, we started this project. Unfortunately, it was December, but for us to meet the timeline of the city, uh, it needs to be done.
And Mr. Cameron, or Mr. Carmody, you guys, we don't typically do this work summer, fall, date, I mean, nighttime in the middle of the winter is the best time to do this work year-round?
Nighttime, no matter what season it is, for the mains, the main installation portion is the best time. Uh, we have discussed, once we get to a point that we won't need such a large opening, such as services, lateral main tie-ins, we'll do everything we can during the day, and we'll be reviewed, as previously, with the Director of Public Works, the engineering staff, and the Sergeant of Police, to make sure everyone is, make sure that everyone approves and is on page for the work.
Yeah, another question, just going down this list. Who and when issued the, when was the permit issued to go forward with this project? And who was the, who was the, uh, permit issued by?
Eleven eighteen was when the permits were signed for the first phase of this project.
So it's very reasonable that it was signed on eleven eighteen, so it began in December? More than reasonable?
We don't wanna send out letters prior to approval permits for all residents. We don't wanna know if I, if someone with the work isn't permitted to begin. So usually, we do it beforehand, then we, we give two weeks' notice prior to let all residents with any questions concerned personally contact myself, which my personal cell phone number is on every letter.
Was the DPW or the mayor notified about the upcoming work, and, or did they have any input on the project being done in the winter period? Again, was the mayor, because I, I spoke to the mayor, and we had a great dialogue, great conversation about this project, but was he notified? Was the DPW on board to be able to do this project? Again, in the wintertime, it's a big concern to have this done in the wintertime, right? We get hit like we did on Saturday night with a quick snowstorm that nobody's expecting. We have road plates out on the road. I had a project maybe five years ago done on my, on my own neighborhood, in Baldwin Ave, they did the street, right? They left literally ten pieces of equipment on my street from the beginning of December until the spring, because we got hit with snow, one after another, after another, and they never came back and removed the equipment. The whole entire neighborhood was messed up for the whole winter. We weren't able to properly plow the streets. You know, if you hit a, a road plate that's in the middle of the street, because we get po, you know, a surprise snowstorm, you're gonna do some serious damage to not only a truck, but to the driver that's driving that, that plow. So those are some of the concerns that I have, is that we did this nighttime work is fine if we need to do something, if it's in the middle of the summer, in the middle of spring, but to do it at wintertime and at night is like a double negative, in my opinion. It's bad enough to do it overnight in the residential neighborhood, but to do it at wintertime is a double negative, in my opinion, again. So, wh, you know, who, who said this was a good idea? Did the mayor give the approval that we could go forward with this project? Did the city engineer, did the DPW? Who was in this conversation that thought this was a good idea to go forward? Because I personally, I personally don't think that it was in the best, uh, interest of the neighborhood. Best interest of the city overall, sure, we need to get the project done, but to the neighborhood, it's a concern of mine. So who, who was in this meeting? Who had these open dialogues that allowed this project to go forward, Mr. Carmody? Or Mr. Cameron?
Well, um, on this, but, you know, like most projects, um, you know, we don't specifically deal with the mayor, we deal with his staff. So, um, you know, the DPW, like, like Matt said, um, we discussed this off, upfront, as to the best way to attack this. And, uh, one thing to keep in mind is the timing, uh, in terms of us being out of the way, so that the, um, you know, so the city can go, can start, uh, their work as well. And I'm not sure if there are other utilities involved besides us, um, but there's just a good chunk of time here, four or five months, um, where we can, if the winter cooperates, you know, we can be out of the way and, and save some extra time down the road.
Sure, and again, if, if winter cooperates, a lot of things could get done, right? There could be a great year for the city of Everett, and many magnitudes, many projects, many, like the Hancock Street sidewalks, or the cleanup contaminations site of the Wind Casino Project. A lot of things could possibly go forward if Mother Nature works with us, it doesn't give us a buried snowstorm in winter like we had last year. But the fact that it can change in the blink of an eye, and we can have a totally different set of circumstances, is a big concern to me, and it's a big concern to the residents that are negatively being impacted on their question, on the, out of the city. Mr. O'Rourke, do you want to add something?
I'd like to point out, Counselor, that, uh, I understand this is being done at a particular time of year, um, that it's not advantageous because of the weather. Uh, at the same time, uh, construction is being done at night with people having their windows closed, which cuts downs on the noise and so on. And in the summertime, typically, people like to open their windows, let the breeze in, and so on, and if the beep, beep, beep of the construction equipment is right outside their window, I think we'd be, uh, getting many more calls than we're getting right now. My understanding is we're not getting many complaints. Certainly, certainly, it isn't irritating to residents, and they have to put up with it, but, uh, they understand work has to get done, uh, and they're going to benefit, uh, from, from potentially less leaks, uh, of this, of these gas lines.
Well, I, I honestly am, am happy that you guys aren't getting the phone calls, because I know that I'm getting them, I know that Counsel McKinnon is getting them, and I'm sure that all of my colleagues here are getting phone calls from residents and constituents in that neighborhood that are being, again, negatively impacted on this. I have two quick questions and, and this...
Would you mind if I just add on that point quickly?
Absolutely.
Um, I do understand the winter season. Uh, I'm very proactive, and I had a schedule, but we plan for the week ahead, looking at the weather, obviously, can change, but I think this weekend was a prime example of how we handle things. No plates are left on the weekend, just because it can change. I have crews on twenty-four-seven, so last this weekend showed, no equipment was left on any of the streets. All pipe, trucks, material, everything was hauled off before the winter storm hit. That would make sure that there was no issues. Everything's backfilled, paving was varicated twice during the day prior to the storm hitting us, to make sure there be no plowing that would be having concerns to the residents. And we also do, try to also help out the city when we are working projects, and so does happen. We do extra plowing, we do haul-out, we try to say, we try to work with the city to also be proactive and make sure it's safe for all parties.
Mr. Carmody, I could not agree more with you. When I said at the beginning of this conversation, you have been nothing but a professional. You've done nothing but accommodate the neighborhood as best as you could. Uh, there is no question that you are a great asset to National Grid and to the community, and I thank you personally, because you and I have had many conversations in the past few weeks regarding this project and regarding this, the scope of work. So I, again, personally, thank you for all you do for that neighborhood and for the city. I'm gonna have two questions, I'm gonna end this. Who in the city has ended the liaison?
Counsel?
Yep. I'm only asking because it's the questions I submitted to the president, so...
I'm coming very, very close to enforcing Rule fifteen, which is in-depth discussions. And I think we're getting a little bit too involved here, because the other councilors do wanna speak too. You, you handled most of this conversation. I think I'm just gonna ask you to take a break, maybe we can get back to you, because...
More than happy to, Mr. President, absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, Counsel Delisola.
Hey, how you doing? Um, I kinda feel your pain, I'm in the same line of work as you, whatever source, planner, the GIS map and all this. This doesn't help us as call, as, myself and colleagues here. I understand the map that you gave us. If this was submitted from you off in the city, I don't know if you know this, this map here. A few courses I have, my colleague hit on a lot of them. I know the equipment has been removed, and Dever will work, Dever will work for me plenty, many years, great contractor, but one of the best I've had, was what you have altered in Ferry Street. Uh, the big issue is, why did we have, I know it's a big project out here, why couldn't we waited till March to start this work?
Work wouldn't be completed at time if the work was started in March. We started in December, that's four extra months of work. We need any, all time possible to complete this project on time. I'm sure, as you said, you're familiar with the work. You can, yourself can imagine how much this can take. For any setbacks, anything at all, we wouldn't hit the deadline, and we'd be in a situation, as discussed previously in this meeting, that you guys would be held up for us, which lead to a worse situation. Uh, this is a situation we can control. You know, if the weather does hit, we just stop, and then we wait till it's approved by the city to begin work again. Um, this work was started as soon as we had all, everything in line, everything is approved by all parties, to make sure we didn't hold up the city. This work is gonna be tough for the mains installation portion, if it's done in the summer, if it's done in December, if it's done at any time. Believe me, I wish, wish we didn't do it at all, but it's for the safety of the community and for everybody. Um, and like I said, this needs to be done at this time to make sure we don't hold up any of the city's work.
I would like to, I got a couple of questions, President. Um, on the detours, seems to be the biggest issue. Friday night, I went out to come down Ferry Street, forgot about the job going on. The detour was, uh, traffic plan submitted to the city and approved when you do this work?
All, for the plan for the week, is all reviewed with Sergeant Bova. Um, right now, currently, safe for phase one, which is Malden Line to Broadway. Every night, we're having two to four police details with two police cruisers. For the middle stage, we have seven police details, two police cruisers, and for four, uh, the lower portion, we have four police details, two police cruisers. We have seventeen, up to seventeen police details at one time, with six police cruisers. And anything the city requests, we certainly do have. We have multiple signs, message boards to allow all residents, and if you had problems detoring at night, I can only imagine what you had, were doing it during the day.
Right, it's just, the, the detour Friday night was just, the cars are parked on the side streets, but we're being detoured too. Nobody can go, not assault. We couldn't move. The cars are parked, I don't know if the residents even know when it's gonna be detoured. I mean, you have a side street that you might get twenty cars all night. All of a sudden, you detour it down that street, and you got twenty cars in about five minutes going down the streets. And there was no place to go. Along High Street, I was trapped. I couldn't get out, I had to go out to Broadway ninety-nine, then go around it. So the detour, can we put signs up at the corners to detour the people? Because there seems to be one detour sign on Ferry Street, and that take a right onto George Street, and that's it. There's no other detours to direct people where to go. So if you're not from the city, you know, you're lost. I know, I know where I'm going, it's in my neighborhood, but I'm lost going on the detours. So I think you just put a sign at the end of the street, take your next left, take your next right, so people know where to go. Because it was, Friday night was very confusing.
Additional signage is never a problem, whatever the city would recommend, and, you know, would like us to do, we certainly will, as many signs as you guys feel is accommodating, we will certainly have and put in place.
And Dever will be responsible for the trench when they're done? When it's all paved and any sinkholes and...
Any sinkholes, we'll be managing the trench until you guys begin your work. Um, as you saw on Friday, as there, we did repack up part of our trench, to repave it, to make sure it was, that it's, you know, suitable for paving, and it's something we do monitor, you know, throughout the day.
Okay, I have a curious question on my own side. Why'd you go steel in front of Walgreens, twelve-inch steel?
It's sixteen-inch steel, because replacing two gas mains, we wouldn't get the di, the volume of gas.
Pressure.
If we only added a twelve-inch plastic line, because plastic only goes to large diameter twelve. So remove two leaking from...
Okay, I was out there talking to them when they were doing the steel line, I was just curious.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Counsel McKinnon?
Through you, Mr., through you, Mr. President, to, uh, Mr. Cameron. Mr. Cameron, um, I just have a quick question. Was there public involvement, was there a public meeting on this? Did we do any outreach to the public surrounding, uh, this project, so that we could actually, uh, have, you know, some of their input as well? Usually, I, I think, don't they go out and maybe have a public hearing on this or something to that effect?
Well, um, no, to be...
Oh, by the way, thanks for coming tonight, too, Mr. Cameron.
Okay.
Yeah. I haven't seen you in a little while, but thanks, thanks for coming.
You're welcome. Um, no, this particular line, because we're replacing it, wasn't, uh, doesn't fall under the category where we have to petition the city, which would cause a, uh, require a public hearing. However, I'm gonna have Matt, uh, talk about the details. We did quite a bit of public outreach, you know, with mailings and so forth, so...
I mean, just, what we're getting, I mean, you can understand, we're probably gonna get some calls, we're gonna get, uh, you know, people, they're up from, what is it, seven P.M. to three, you know, A.M. They're up all night if they're hearing this stuff. Is there any way that, possible, that we could, uh, maybe this would be a question for you, Matt, uh, that we could actually, uh, maybe do the certain, like, you know, heavy equipment type stuff, or the, the noise, uh, the noise, you know, problematic stuff? Uh, we could do that early on in the night, and then come in after that and try to, like, you know, maybe quiet it down a little bit? Is there any way to do that? Or, I, I'm asking you, because you guys do this all the time.
Um, to answer your first part, in terms of reaching out to the community, we had our headquarters send out three different letters to, uh, let everyone notify the residents that this work was to come about.
They, they notified the residents too, of the, not to cut you short, but did they notify them of the hours it was gonna be done?
Yes, the hours are, as you can see, gonna hand this over to you, which was submitted. Um, the, a lot of notifications look like this. The first page lets you know the hours of work, the scope of work, how it'll be affected. The second page is a detailed, project details, phase one, phase two, phase three, explanation of what they can expect during that portion of work. And along with, the last page does point out two YouTube videos that we have made this year. One is what to expect during a main line replacement and a service line replacement. On that point, I also had Dever hand out a hand letter to make sure if anyone was missed through a mailing, that they would also be able to talk to the guys on site who are handing out the letters each day. We also have a door hanger that goes on with our foreman's number and my own, that they need to be, set up a schedule, to have any questions throughout, that they can reach out to us.
Okay. Now, I mean, that, what I'm saying is, too, is, we're getting noise complaints, stuff like that. Is there anything to do, or anything that you guys could do to actually minimize that?
We're, we're doing the best we can to minimize noise, and I, we're gonna work on some different options this week, just hopefully see if we can, you know, reduce the noise later in the evening. The issue is that what we're dealing on Ferry Street is extremely thick asphalt and concrete, cobblestones, railroad tracks, it's, so the larger equipment is necessary, even during cleanup, just because of the scale of the work that we are performing, and amount of asphalt and requiring the crew to put back. Uh, we are gonna put, like, the whole ram and the law excavator, we're certainly trying to use only through the earlier portions of the night, and try to minimize the noise later. So that's something we are gonna try to do better managing this week. Um, as you sure we can, as you guys are, are sure, we are learning throughout the best way to manage, you know, with the community, and at this time and hour, and we'll do our best to minimize that.
That's what, that's what we're trying to get here.
Yep.
So that you know what we're looking for. We're looking for minimizing noise during the later hours of night. I mean, if this was done in front of your house, I don't think you'd be liking it either. So, that's what we're looking at now, you know what I'm saying? So, I know the end result is gonna be a good thing, but, right now, these people are going through some, uh, you know, some problems with the noise and stuff like that. So if there's any way that we can minimize it, is there any way that we could do something to that effect? We'd like to hear that from you. So, I'll leave it up to my colleague here. Uh, maybe he can actually meet up with you again at some point or have phone conversation, whatever. It seems like there's a dialogue between you two now, so, uh, that might be the route to go. But, uh, that would probably be the way I would look at it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Pirro?
I'll be very brief. I know this has been a lengthy discussion. I just wanted to comment. I was on-site Friday night. About ten o'clock, the crew closest to Malden, they were great, getting things wrapped up for the storm. They were out of there by, I want to say, ten-thirty, eleven, maybe, Friday night in preparation. Everything was clean, spotless. And, uh, just on a second note, uh, to my colleagues, I think in the future, something like this should really be dealt with in Government Operations and Public Safety Committee. This is a very lengthy discussion, and I think that's the right place for it. Thank you.
Council McLaughlin, let's wrap this up.
Mr. President, I'm actually going to take the advice of my good colleague from Ward Three and ask to make a motion to send this to Government Operations. I didn't realize this was going to open up to such a dialogue. I've come up with a whole entire another list of questions that I'd like to have answered from this conversation tonight. So, my colleague suggested that it goes into committee. I think he's right, to not have any more discussion on this.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion for that.
You have a list of questions?
Do I have another list of questions? I will submit them in appropriate amount of time, as I did previously.
Well, remember, we have to have them seven days before they were invited to the meeting. I mean, seven days before...
That is, that is correct, although, that, that's fine. That's correct.
All right.
I, I do believe that the charter states that that is for council meetings and not committee meetings, but that's okay. Well, I'll submit them before the committee meeting. That's fine.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? We discussed a gentleman with the customary thanks. Thank you very much for appearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the motion, uh, that we refer this to Government Operations, we have a second?
Yes.
Second, all in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. You have referred to Government Operations. That was item number twenty.
Make a motion, uh, suspend the rules, take item twenty-one, please.
What's that? Uh, motion made in second to suspend the rules and take item number twenty-one from the council. All in favor, signified by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Item twenty-one, the clerk will read.
Item twenty-one, it's a resolution sponsored by Council Leon McKinnon and the entire City Council. City Council put this second annual five-k run walk supporting Everett families living with autism and sponsored by the FSI Foundation for Autism Incorporated.
Council McKinnon?
Uh, I see Mr. Coyle in the audience. Could I have him before us?
Where, is he here?
Yeah.
Mr. Coyle? Okay. Uh, motion made in second to invite the gentleman before us. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Please identify yourself.
My name is Sean Coyle. I'm the executive director for the FSI Foundation for Autism.
Is that your manager with you?
This is my son Shane. Yes.
My name is Shane.
Thank you.
I'm fifteen years old.
Awesome. Uh, Mr. Coyle, just a quick question, uh, maybe a brief overview. You gave us a, um, it was a, uh, a handout of, uh, the, everything that you did last year. This is going to be the second one.
Yes.
Last year, it all went according to plan. I'm assuming it was a great time I was there.
It was a great time. There was a lot of members here that were at, at the event. We're looking forward to having a great event this year. We just would like the City Council's approval on, uh, the date, which would be May first to, uh, which is a Sunday, two thousand sixty.
It was held on a Sunday this past year, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that worked out fine?
That worked out great. We, you know, really had a successful event. Uh, safety was the first issue.
Yeah.
Uh, the Everett Police Department did a fine job, um, coordinating the, the whole race with all the runners.
All right, and, um, let me see. Uh, to date, uh, you've been helping families in the city of Everett, correct?
Yes, if you look through the pamphlet, there is, uh, three families. There has been four families that have received grants. Uh, we do have, uh, four more families that we're reviewing right now, uh, that will probably receive the grant also, this, you know, within the next month. And we've been posting it in the Everett paper, um, the families that have been receiving the grant money.
This has also been online?
Yes, we have the...
You have a website?
We have a website, uh, W.W.FSI for the number four, autism.org. And we do have the profit and loss statement up there, and also some of the families, donors, uh, local businesses that have helped us out, which has been really great. A lot of people have been supportive here in Everett. And we had a lot of people from the surrounding communities. If you look in the pamphlet, it's pretty amazing to see how many people came here to Everett to support our Everett families living with autism.
Uh, I have no further questions. I'll be supporting this tonight. Um, let me see. I want to say, apologize for, for lengthy discussion prior, but, uh...
Oh, that's quite all right. That's quite all right.
Any further, any further questions or discussions? Uh, yes, Council Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend, uh, this gentleman. He's a businessman, as we all know, in this city. Wonderful father, as you can clearly see. It's people like you that make this city the city that it is. You're concerned, you're a homeowner here. I've known you for over fifteen, twenty years. You're a great guy, and I know you have the Lomontane family with you.
Yeah, another, another great Everett family.
And we appreciate that. But if there's anything that we can do, is there any suggestion? I know that it costs you some money to run this event.
Yes.
And is there any way that the City Council can help you, maybe defer some of these costs? I know that you pay a lot for the police. Is that...
Yes, we, we, we did. We had thirteen offices that we employed that day for the event.
And how much did that count to?
Uh, I have right here the profit and loss, uh, expenses, police detail, two thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
That's a lot of money. And I, I know that the union rules, Mr. President, that guide some of these events, that you have to have paid details and so forth, but...
Yes.
You know, that's a lot of money. What other expenditures does the city cost, uh, for the organization?
Um, that was, you know, the public works, we did a great job. I mean, they, they helped with the Everett Police Department, um, you know, throughout the event. Uh, there was other several costs with timing, equipment, T-shirts, you know. It, it, basically, it costs roughly around ten thousand dollars, ten to eleven thousand dollars to, to host the event. I mean, I'm hoping this year, last year was the first year, we're hoping this year that we'll be able to talk to some of the business. We might be able to cut that cost down. That's, that's what the hope is, is to really go out and have the Everett community, the local businesses, help us. Um, many, many people in Everett, through the canning event that we do do in April, the, the community is just, it's overwhelming, the support they do give us out on the street when we do a canning drive. So, we're hoping to defer some of the costs with that, you know, and put it as one package for the Ferry Street, um, well, the FSI Foundation grants.
Well, if there's anything that we can do as a City Council, as you noted, Council McKinnon, put the entire City Council, which is every one of us here, we support you, and if there's anything that we can do to help promote this event, uh, in any way, please let us know and let me know. I see you on a regular basis anyway. And keep up the great work. It's good to see your son Shane so helpful in the, uh, this organization.
Thank you.
And welcome to City Hall tonight.
All right, thank you.
Council Delisola?
Just want to echo, echo the words of my colleague. It was a great event. I ran it myself. It was a good time.
Yes. It was great seeing you come across the line there.
Yeah. It wasn't easy. Frankie Park, if you're out there, I'm challenging you again this year.
Rubble legs.
And just a shout-out to all the businesses in Everett, all the residents.
Yes.
See the canning or you want to give a donation, go online, any amount helps. That's why I'd make a shout-out on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Gentlemen, you are excused. Pardon? Excuse the customary thanks. Oh, sorry, Council McKinnon?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, this was a great event. Uh, I, I, I helped with it last year, and, uh, I hope it goes over as well again this year, and I hope that we can all get involved with it. Um, and also, uh, I'd like to ask for favorable action. Excuse the customary thanks. Thank you for coming up tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a privilege to have both of you here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am going to run out of this here. I'm going to beat you. Rubble legs.
Council?
Favorable action.
Oh, I know.
Oh, just, uh... It's just, yeah. Well, well, all right. Let the council support it. Favorable action, let the council support this.
Okay, so, uh, okay, thank you for a motion. Motion made in second for council support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. Do you have anybody else? Clerk will read. Clerk, I have a question.
Clerk will read item number one. I know one communication, yeah, order sponsored by Council John F. Hanlon, his president, to transfer and appropriate a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from budgetary fund balance into Mount Washington Street wall account, just for additional work needed beyond the scope of the bid that was currently received.
Finance? Council Seminelli? Uh, this is, this, this is a non-debatable order. Uh, you have two choices this evening. You can either refer it to the next meeting, or you can refer it to Ways and Means Committee. It's the only two things you can do with all of these.
I make a motion to refer it to the next meeting.
Council Seminelli?
It is money well spent. Uh, the people upon the Hill have been putting up with this problem for a long time, and we hope that this money will fix the problem once and for all.
Okay, thank you. Although that is a debatable word, we're not supposed to do that, so, uh, Council de Florio?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I know that our charter says we need to have to wait till the next meeting and send it to committee, but this is self-explanatory. That's why I made the recommendation of, uh, sending it to the next, uh, meeting.
Next, refer to the next meeting. Council McLaughlin?
I, I'm okay with referring it to the next meeting. I do have a couple of questions on the issue, so I, I would, uh, concur with my colleague from Ward Five that we send it to the next meeting.
Well, then, non-debatable, just either pass it or, I mean, not pass it, either refer it to the committee...
Make a motion to refer it to the next meeting.
Or refer it to the next meeting. Rosa, next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Council Matuski first?
I just have a question. Um, I, I don't understand, if we voted on this tonight, favorable...
Can't.
Can't, okay. When can you actually speak about the item?
You can't. It's, it's in our rules.
You don't speak about spending a hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
It's in the charter. Sorry, it's in the charter. Either refer it to the committee or refer it to next meeting.
At the next meeting you can speak.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Oh, I see. So, this is like a rehearsal for the piece?
Kind of.
Okay, thank you.
If, if I may...
Council Capone?
Um, we, we can speak on it. We just can't take a, a final vote on it. So, if the council, you have to suspend the rules in order to speak on it. But if we suspended the rules, you could speak on it. Uh, I, too, have some questions. Uh, so, if it's the will of the body to lay it over the table to the next meeting, I'd like to make sure that we invite the proper people up here to get our questions answered, one of them being, uh, probably the city auditor, and maybe someone from the Engineers Department.
Auditor, and who?
Uh, Engineers Department.
Council McLaughlin?
Mr. President, again, I, I apologize. I actually think that sending this to the Ways and Means Committee, because we don't have, want to have an open, lengthy discussion on a matter like this that could develop into something like happened tonight, so I'm putting it into committee and being able to discuss it in committee so that we save time on the floor. So, I'd make a motion, actually, to send this to the Ways and Means Committee so that we can have the open dialogue that is needed on this piece.
Okay. I need a second.
I just want to say, Mr. President, just...
Council Matuski? Okay, there we go.
You know, I was just concerned as to when you can actually speak on any particular item. I, I'm not, I agree with Councilman Seminelli, the wall should be repaired, but I was just looking for information. So, the next meeting, you could actually talk on this?
Either the next meeting or the committee. I don't know which yet. But I have no second on it.
Okay, fine. That was my only question on, on the matter.
I have no second on to the committee of Ways and Means, so therefore, the motion to, uh, refer it to our next meeting. No further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It is referred to, uh, item one is referred to, uh, to the next meeting. Item two.
Item number two is an order sponsored by Council John F. Hanlon, his president, that the sum of one million thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars be transferred and appropriated from budgetary fund balance into the capital improvement stabilization fund. The appropriation is followed, is following the parameters set forth under the city's financial reserve policies.
Same rules, folks.
Motion to the committee?
Ways and Means?
Yes.
Need a second?
Second.
Second, motion made in second to refer it to committee on Ways and Means. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Refer it to Ways and Means. Clerk read item three.
Item number three is an order sponsored by Council John F. Hanlon, his president, that the sum of seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand twenty-fourty-one dollars be transferred and appropriated from budgetary fund balance into the stabilization fund. This appropriation is following the parameters set forth under the city's financial reserve policies.
Motion to Ways and Means?
Motion to refer it to Ways and Means, but I have a second. Motion made in second to refer it to Ways and Means. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. You have referred to Ways and Means.
Item number four is an order sponsored by Council John F. Hanlon, his president, that the sum of seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand twenty-fourty-one be transferred and appropriated from budgetary fund balance into the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund account. This appropriation is following the parameters set forth under the city's financial reserve policies.
Motion to Ways and Means? Motion to refer it, any second?
On the motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, well, all the stuff that we're referring to Ways and Means, we do need to invite people up, is that correct?
Yes, the proper people being...
We will, we will get them.
So, uh, I was just going to say, would, would you please invite the proper...
No.
Thank you.
So, to be the...
Mr. President on the motion?
Normal people, yes. We still only have a motion, I don't have a second yet. Yes, Michael? I'm sorry, Council McLaughlin?
Mr. President on the motion. We're sending all these items to committee, to Ways and Means. That's why I thought item one would be most appropriate. Who's going to submit these questions? You guys want the questions seven days before our committee meeting? Who's going to submit questions on all of these items that I was asked to do tonight and I'm asked to do for public safety in the week?
Well, I don't know, but when we get to the bottom, I was going to ask.
Okay, thank you.
For the last one. Okay, so, we still have a, um, motion to refer it to Ways, and second, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, referring to Ways and Means, signify by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Item number five.
Item number five is an order sponsored by Council John F. Hanlon, his president, that the sum of twenty-six thousand be transferred from the following accounts in the police department's account as follows. Administrative vehicles, four thousand eighty-two dollars, bucket truck, three hundred and twenty-five dollars, F-550 hot box, thirty-one hundred ninety dollars, chipper truck, ten thousand twenty-ninety-six dollars, bobcat, six thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars, vehicles, nineteen hundred and eighty dollars. Transfer will fund the purchase of a new vehicle for the animal control officer.
Council, uh...
Thank you, Mr. President. This seems, again, like the, uh, the wall piece. It seems self-explanatory. It's saying it's going to the animal control officers, so I don't believe it needs to go into Ways and Means and have a lengthy discussion. Um, so, I just, uh, uh, refer it to the, uh, the next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Motion to refer this item to the next meeting of the Council, Councilman McLaughlin.
I'm all set, thanks, Mr. President.
Okay.[1322.66]
Mr. President, on the motion. We're sending all these items to committee, to Ways and Means. That's why I thought item one would be most appropriate. Who's gonna submit these questions? You guys want the questions seven days before committee meeting. Who's gonna submit questions on all of these items that I was asked to do tonight and I'm asked to do for public safety in a week?
Well, I don't know, but when we get to the bottom, I was gonna ask.
Okay, thank you.
For the last one. Okay, so we still have a motion to refer to Ways and Means. And second, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, referring to Ways and Means. Signify by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Item number five.
Item number five is an order sponsored by Councilor John F. Hanlon, his president, that the sum of $26,000 be transferred from the following accounts in the police department's account as follows. Administrative vehicles, $4,082. Bucket truck, $325. F-550 hot box, $3,190. Chipper truck, $10,029. Bobcat, $6,127. Vehicles, $1,980. Transfer will fund the purchase of a new vehicle for the animal control officer.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. This seems, again, like the wall piece. It seems self-explanatory. It's saying it's going to the animal control officers, so I don't believe it needs to go into Ways and Means and have a lengthy discussion. So I just refer to the next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Motion to refer this item to the next meeting of the Council. Counselor McGlaughlin.
I'm all set, thanks, Mr. President.
Okay. I need a second. A second. Motion made in second to refer this to the committee on, I'm sorry, committee at the next meeting. Any further discussion on the motion? Sorry, I got Counselor Matuzky first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question to the chair. I've received information regarding this piece in the mail, like most of us probably have, right?
I know.
Item number five.
Yep.
Why would we normally, if we got information, say on any one of these pieces? Why are we sending it to Ways and Means Committee? I don't get that.
It's part of our rule.
So, item five is exempt from that rule, am I right?
Anything transferred, any money, any money that has to be transferred.
Goes to a committee.
Yeah, it has to go to.
The charter.
Committee on next meeting. One of the other.
It's delayed one meeting.
Just when we want to go to the next meeting.
So, evidently, these first four pieces, I'm just trying to get this straight. I know I've been out of here for about a year, and things have changed, but I just wanna get it straight. So, the other four pieces, somebody wanted to send them, made a motion to send them to committee because they have questions on it. Am I correct?
All right, hold. I'm gonna ask the council, I mean, I'm sorry, our clerk to explain these two motions are referring, are referring to committee or referring to the next meeting.
I have the advantage of having the charter in front of me, so what our charter says is that no measure that's considered non-routine. What's routine? A lot of the resolutions are routine, so they can be voted on finally that evening. If something is considered non-routine, you can't pass it finally that night. And since an order only takes one vote, it's gotta be either referred to the next meeting or sent to committee. And a good example is that I asked the chief of staff about the transfers of number five. If that was transfers within the police department, that probably could've been voted on tonight as routine because it's just the police department transferring money within their own accounts. So we could've. But since it's coming from other departments, that's kinda not routine and would take, I believe, eight votes to pass. Am I right? Yeah. So that makes it not routine. So it just means you can't vote on it finally that night. And like an ordinance only needs two readings now because there's only one branch, you couldn't, you know, you couldn't vote for it twice, you know, in that one meeting in fact.
Okay, you know, but I thought the charter, you know, and maybe I'm a little bit, you know, not informed as to what everything is that's in the charter, was to streamline some of these orders and so forth so that you're not bogging down committees. This used to be the big argument. Everybody's sending everything to committee. Now, all of a sudden, it has to go to committee, or you just lay it over for a week. I can understand that, to get more information maybe or whatever, but to ask all of these department heads and so forth to come to a meeting where they could just send you a communication like they did in item number five, I don't think I got anything from this other group. But, I mean, technically, wouldn't that be enough to explain what the expenditure is?
For the next meeting, yes, absolutely. Because you don't have that checks and balances, and I'm sorry, Mr. President, if I'm going beyond, but because you don't have that second branch that bought you that extra time.
Oh, see, there was some good in that system too.
Yeah, and so what happens is, they give you the extra time with that extra week.
The check and balance. I understand that, yeah.
And since you also have to give questions ahead of time, you also would have to lay it over for at least a week anyhow.
And the other question I have, Mr. President, to the clerk, is, is it a majority vote if, say, a majority of the councils that are here didn't want to send it to committee and just lay it over to the next meeting, in which case?
It works the opposite. If something was...
Does it take one member to make that motion?
If the president determines something to be not routine.
Okay.
It only works for something determined not, I'm sorry, something routine. If the president should say, this is a routine matter, and one person objects, then it would be considered not routine and either sent to committee or laid over. But it doesn't work the opposite.
Okay. Well, thank you for clearing that up. Thank you.
All righty.
So, where are we? We're still on item number five, right? You have an item five yet?
Right, we're still on item five.
Yes, Counselor McKinnon?
Mr. President, to the clerk. In the same motion, if we're sending things to the committees, these specific committees, why are we having the seven questions, seven, you know, or ten?
Seven days for the question.
But it's questions.
Right, there's one thing you have to...
I mean, that's why I'm sending it to committee. I have a whole load of questions, and I don't wanna debate on the floor, so I'm gonna get time so I can send it to committee, correct?
Right. You send them those questions ahead of time, and they will answer them in committee. As you saw today, everybody was really prepared with their answers, and I...
Why not just do it on the floor, though? We could do everything on the floor, then. I mean, if we're gonna have to submit questions to get it into committee, we could do it right on the floor.
Because in committee, you don't have to stick to just those questions. You do have to stick to just that subject. But follow-up questions...
If I have questions upon questions in committee, that's where I'm asking them.
Exactly.
So, I mean, for me, for me to submit, you know, several, but through you, Mr. President, just to ask the question, if I have several questions that I want answered, and then I have several more in committee, I'm asking them. I'm not gonna just sit there, you know.
Oh, no, and you can, as long as it's on the same subject. What those questions do is give the person appearing before you a chance to prepare for the meeting by saying, this is the basic gist. You're not asking them absolutely every question you're gonna ask them.
Sure.
It's, these are the basic things I wanna know. When is this gonna be done? How much is it gonna cost?
My point is, on this, though, to the city clerk, is that if we're doing that in committee, we're doing it on the floor. We're doing it both ways.
It's not supposed to happen on the floor.
It shouldn't happen on the floor.
The floor is only for up or down votes on legislation.
Okay.
And on orders.
All right. I mean, just so that we have, what I'm trying to do is get clarity here.
As Counselor Matuzky can tell you, in the House of Representatives, nobody appears in that chamber and have the secretary of state appear and answer 5,000 questions.
Sure.
It's done in committee.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's where it's done.
And that's where most of this will be done, in committee.
That's right.
Okay.
But you do not have to stick to the questions you've submitted. That gives the person a chance, and I think the council did a good job at that.
Just to get adjusted on it.
And I think you saw the result of it. They were able to...
So, I mean, we could submit one or two questions and then ask an array of questions in committee, correct?
As long as you've given them a really good, and you stick to the subject.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
It's okay. You still have a spread file, right?
Right.
Okay. Item number five, was referred to the... Next meeting. Next meeting of the council, and we have a motion, and we have a second on it. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, you have referred to the next meeting.
But the, we did talk with the city clerk just before the meeting, and items six through, I believe, seventeen are all renewals. There's no issues with any of them, according to the city clerk. Nothing outstanding, nothing out of the ordinary. So, I'd like to have the motion, it's taken all as one, read them separately, but take six through seventeen collectively.
All right. Motion made to take, thank you, motion made to take items six through seventeen collectively, seconded by Counselor DeFlorio. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, so moved. Item six through seventeen is before you.
Item number six is a lodging house license, Prescott House, 36 Church Street. Seven is lodging house backpackers hostel, 13 School Street. Eight is first and second class model deal license from Honda Casa, Boston 100 Broadway. Nine is a second class model deal license, Autocheck Pro Incorporated, DBA Main Street Car Sales, 146 Main Street. Ten is second class model deal license, Crimson Auto Sales LLC, 163 Ferry. Eleven is second class model deal license, Inman Motor Sales of Somerville at 1760 Revere Beach Parkway. Number twelve is second class model deal license, Crusoe Automotive, 49 Robin Street. Thirteen, second class model deal license, Summit Management Group, 138 Spring. Fourteen is second class model deal license, Boston Auto Brokers, 353 Third Street. Number fifteen, Redemption Center License, Dan's Redemption, 107 Hancock. Sixteen, auto body repair license, Broadway Gas and Service, 356 Broadway. Item number seventeen, second class model deal license, Lundale Gas and Services, 725 Broadway.
Frugal Action, the others.
Motion made in second for Frugal Action, item six through seventeen. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All...
Broke up.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're broke up.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sollo. Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuzky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Polatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sminelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Nine yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've granted all the petitions, thank you. Item eighteen.
Item number eighteen is resolution sponsored by Councilor Anthony DePiero. The city considering installing barrier along the section of Horace Mann Playground parking lot that is adjacent to Foster Street as a safety precaution. Counselor DePiero?
Yes, I wanna thank Mr. Souza from Planning and Development. He provided us, I think, all of us with the memo of the work being done, and they are indeed going to be putting a barrier to prevent cars from going over that lot once again. So, just wanted to thank him and refer this back to sponsor.
Motion made in second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All opposed, the ayes have it. Motion has passed. We're on item twenty-two, I believe.
Item number twenty-two, Mr. President, is resolution sponsored by Councilor John Lee McKinnon for a total compilation of work appears down on Ash Street, Coblen Street, with timeframe for total completion on both streets.
Refer this to committee on government operations.
If I may ask one question, is that, you have a date on that total compilation? We don't want to go back to 1804.
No. Actually, it would be just on this job. What I'll do is, pretty much the body of the wording here is asking the three questions that I want. So, what I'll do is just submit the three questions and ask for the job that's at hand now.
On the motion to refer?
Government operation.
Second, all in favor? Did you have a question? No, okay. All opposed, the ayes have it. Item twenty-three.
Item number twenty-three, order sponsored by Councilor Anthony DePiero, Fred Capone, Rosa DeFlorio, Michael Mangan, Michael McGlaughlin, and Leo McKinnon. The pursuant council of thirty-eight, the city council establishes special committee consisting of four members to be selected by the president to explore what other cities and towns are doing to address opioid epidemic and to make suggestions that will enable our city to fight addiction in intelligent, proactive, and effective manner.
Counselor DePiero?
We talked about this a bit at the last meeting. It's something that I feel is very needed in the city. I said there's no need to reinvent the wheel with different programs going on in neighboring cities and throughout the state. I think this committee is needed to see what's being done, what's working, and we need to implement it here in Everett. And I also wanna thank Counselor Capone. We went back and forth on the language with this piece, and I think it's something that is very needed.
Counselor Capone, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to my colleague. You're very welcome. Anytime, I'm willing to help. On this piece, it's a very important issue, as we're all aware. It has, it has touched lives at many levels. You see it even in campaigns at the presidential level. It's being discussed. So, from ground level, local communities, all the way up nationally, and dare say internationally, it's a very important piece. We've had tremendous community involvement, Everett Overcoming Addiction. This, I think, will help them, help all of us collectively work to try to get help for those folks that need it, and try to find a way to bring this problem under control and someday hopefully defeat it. So, I wholeheartedly second the motion.
Okay, motion made in second. Okay, Counselor McKinnon?
Very brief. We, us three, my two colleagues and myself, we were at the Everett Overcoming Addiction tonight. They had a knock-in training program that was very, very useful and very, very helpful. It could save lives in our community. I think what we have to do is we have to get that message out there as much as possible and the training that's available to these people that are in this city, they need to actually take a look at that, and they need to go and actually be trained with this. It was good training. The woman that was speaking on it was very informative, and I think that we need to actually, you know, expose that to the people within our city so that they can actually, some of them could be saved just by this simple thing. So, and that's the message that I was getting there tonight. They're gonna be having additional training on this, so as soon as that comes forward, I'm sure that my colleagues or I will come forward and ask that that be produced before ECTV, and we can actually have that go well to the whole city as a entirety. So, I just wanna say, you know, this is great piece, and that hopefully we can get more of this message out there to the community.
Thank you. If I could, just make a mention, the items that were just passed out to you come from the Mass Municipal Association. It's all about the subject matter at hand. It'd be nice if you read it, and I think that it's well done. The governor was 100%, behind this as he spoke on it, so did the lieutenant governor, so did the chairman of the Mass Municipal Association, so did the chairman of the Massachusetts Clerk, I'm sorry, Councils Association. They all spoke on it. Everybody is in favor of getting something done in this, and everybody is jumping on and board, and I'm glad to see that this council is ready to go on it. Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I wanna commend my colleague from R3, Counsel DePiero. Only one, this is, as people know, this is first order that he's actually passed, whatever, and I don't, I mean, what a special thing for, especially the, you know, the importance of this to be his first order and getting it passed, which I believe it's gonna pass tonight. So I just wanna commend him, and as usually is, it's customary, when somebody passes their order for the first time in city government, you give them a round of applause. So I'd like to congratulate Counselor DePiero. I know it's premature, but I believe that people will vote in favor of him, so I just wanna commend him and congratulate him.
So, who did it? What was the motion, what's?
Dinner's on him tonight.
Yeah, back to you. Yeah, motion for Frugal Action, the clerk called a roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sollo.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuzky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Sminelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yays, zero nays. I will be in touch. Item twenty-four.
If we could, the next three pieces, I believe, are all going to, they say, to go to public safety and public service. May government operations. It's possible to make a recommendation to take twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six collectively. Just have the clerk read it and refer them to the respective committees.
Okay. Motion made to refer to respective committees, item twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. All in favor? All opposed? Show one thirty-one, show. Yeah. Show one thirty-one, show.
Item twenty-four, the resolution sponsored by Councilor John Lee McKinnon for right building, the power services office, city engineer, to establish the government operations, public safety, public service committee, meaning to claim wider property throughout the city than the intended that goes to set to them, give an address on the real property and the number of property street. Twenty-five, resolution sponsored by Councilor Rosa DeFlorio and Leo McKinnon for vice chief police, to be same to our next government operations, public service, public safety, go along, qualify to this twenty-three, four, and twenty-six. Resolution sponsored by Councilor Rosa DeFlorio and Leo McKinnon, to invite two services directing their environment, next government operations, public safety, service, both are moving off, fifteen minutes time to corner, that amount again, twenty-two.
Just like to point out that all of these all have their questions built into it, so which is good, and this is what we should be doing. So, that was all in favor? I don't, had passed, so clerk will read the next one. Twenty-seven.
Item number twenty-seven, resolution sponsored by Councilor Wayne Matuzky, representative from National Grid, appear next meeting in February, relates to ongoing issues with streetlights at various locations throughout the city for months.
Counselor Matuzky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Cameron, who was here on other matters tonight, and, you know, my issues was concerning Revere Beach Parkway. There's a lot more pedestrian traffic. I'll use landmarks, for instance, near the Silver Fox, Richie Slush. People are actually walking on the parkway now. They actually fixed some sidewalks last year and some crosswalks in that area. But we've got two lights that have been hit by a truck, one four years ago, and hasn't been put back up. Right after Craftsman's Glass, there's a cone there, and up until the cone, which has only been placed there about a year ago, it was just this bolt thing sticking out of the ground. And the other one was hit about five months ago, and that's got a cone on it, too. And they actually did fix the streetlight at the corner of Lewis and the Parkway. But I noticed tonight, I just, they must've fixed it today, the light is very dim. I don't know if they got a bad palette of lights. Do you remember that debacle a few years ago? I thought it was my eyesight, the bulbs were blinking and so forth all over the city. And one day they'd be on, the next day they were off. And Mr. Cameron finally did say that they got a bad palette of light bulbs. So, with that, I'll refer this back to sponsor. He is making efforts to fix lights, and I guess they're still in charge of all streetlights in the city, National Grid, is my understanding. We own the poles now, but the National Grid has to fix them. So, I have his direct number now, and the other gentleman that was here, I have his card. I think we're gonna be able to solve some lighting problems in the city in the future. So, I'd like to refer that back to sponsor. Thank you.
Okay. On the motion, did you have anything you wanna say?
Yes, I just have a comment through you, Mr. President. I did speak to Mr. Sapino from the mayor's office, and I don't know a lot of details on it, but I would encourage you to get in touch with him, something in regards to the city eventually taking over a lot of those lights and replacing them with nice LED lighting, you know, to really increase the appearance of them.
Okay. On the motion, refer it back to sponsor, all in favor? So move your refer it back to sponsor. Item number twenty-nine.
Item number twenty-nine, resolution sponsored by Councilor Fred Capone, that a representative from the city services department appear at our next council meeting to discuss hot-top replacement and cement sidewalks after contractors have performed work, to seven along Bow Street and other locations throughout the city.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've probably all seen it as you went around the city campaigning. Sidewalk work has been done, and instead of pouring cement, we get hot-top. And, you know, the city goes through the effort and the expense of putting sidewalks together, and then some work is done, and then it hot-top and it never turns back to cement. So, I've noticed it on Bow Street, I've noticed it throughout the city. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to refer this to the committee on government operations, public service, public safety, invite a representative from city services, and someone from the engineer's office.
Second.
Who made second? Oh, second, okay. Counselor Del Sollo.
Yeah, I'll hold my questions till next meeting.
Okay, okay. Motion made in second, refer to government operations. Any further discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. All opposed, the ayes have it. So we have referred to government operations. Item twenty-nine. Item thirty, please.
Item number thirty, that a representative from the city services department and city